Good morning, Marty Mar. I love you, brother. Hey, Marty Mar, you gonna enjoy the conversation this morning. I know I'm so hyped this morning. It's because I had a cup of coffee at home and I don't drink a Starbucks. And normally when I get here, oh, two minutes, I got two minutes. Normally when I get here, um, I'm just now getting my coffee made here and then I'm just starting to drink it. So now today I'm like two cups in already. And I've been up since like five this morning. I had to get up this morning and go get the baby some formula. Because last night, let me tell you, my day yesterday was freaking exhausting. And by the time I was done with everything, I just did not have it in me to go to the store. So, um, we're getting ready to start recording, y'all. So, I love you guys. Would you guys please go over to the four one nine grind to watch the Rising Grind Morning Show? We are in the studio. Dwan and JB are interns. JB? JB hates the camera. But, okay, so go to the four one nine grind, you guys, and watch the show. Love you guys. Good morning. I mean, have a blessed day. Hey, Michael. Good morning. Yes, I'm wired and wired. Okay, the conversation is about child support. Yeah, Marcus, you gonna like this one. So you guys go over to the four one nine grind. Love you. What is he talking about? He said mute the mics, please. No, Jesse, just text me.
Since you, since you vibing, you can bring us on the show?
Okay. The all new Rise and Grind Morning Show. It is your girl, Miss Leah Renee. And I got my boy Big Trees, women.
Hear me?
Yes, I'm feeling great, feeling great. How are you feeling today, Trees?
It's another beautiful, what's today? Tuesday?
Tuesday. July the 2nd.
Hell no, 202, I need 200.
Hey, uh, I was on my live just a minute ago and they was like, you are so hyped, like, uh, and my girl Breezy, she was like, I'm loving your hair and your energy. Listen, this morning, I'm gonna tell you what's different about this morning. Um, well, I woke up this morning at about five o'clock this morning. I had a really long day yesterday. And I ended up, I was supposed to go get my daughter some more formula. And I was too tired to do it last night. So I woke up at five this morning without an alarm clock, might I add. I jumped up. I was like, you know, let me go get this formula and get myself together. So I went to the store, ended up getting more than the formula. Came back with some coffee and some creamer for the office and some other things. And then I came home, I did my makeup at home. Normally I come in here and I'm scrambling and scrambling and doing my makeup and making coffee and doing everything all at once. But I did my makeup at home, I got myself together, I did some prep for the show. And I came in ready to go, hustling and busting. Oh, and I had two cups of coffee already.
Yeah, she on, she on point, point, y'all.
So I'm on like a hundred today, in a good way.
Vibe. It's a great vibe. I'm glad to see you like that. Uh, on a beautiful Tuesday. So, you know, may your whole day stay that way, Leah.
Yes, let's, yes, let's pray so.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Again, want to thank all those, the show was brought to you by, this is the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show, brought to you by Hot Box Bistro's and Lima Humadot. We would just like to say thank you to all of our proud sponsors, right here on the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show. Make sure you go to Toledo City Paper, vote us, the best duo anchor.
Yes.
And the best local podcast in the country. This is the number one urban podcast show in the country. It's live, you seeing it in its raw form. You're seeing how we grow together. Hearts for all of the grinders. If you are grinding this morning, I want you to hit the heart buttons. Let's set the tone right now, cuz the, you can expect the unexpected today. I promise you, Leah.
Yes.
When you think about those who have been grinding with us since day one.
Man, I feel like they're my family, like y'all family.
Absolutely.
Cuz we see y'all.
And we, and we are, we're working on some of our, our technical pieces. And we want to thank our interns for being committed.
Yes.
And getting the show together. So yes, we have interns in the studio, helping us get things together again. We want to thank you for tuning in. Leah, it's a beautiful. Well, it was a little brisk this morning. It was a little brisk and it was a lot of, lot of cars in traffic today.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the weather is a little brisk this morning, however, it is going to be looking up later today. Currently it's forty-eight degrees and cloudy, but we're gonna see a high of seventy today. And it's gonna be sunny, nice and sunny. So we get seventy degree weather with some sun. And then tomorrow it's gonna get all the way up to seventy-three and sunny. And then Friday and Saturday is gonna be in the mid-seventies within, with a lot of sun. So it's gonna be beautiful this weekend. It's gonna be a high of sixty-nine on Sunday. Um, so make sure you make some plans. And if you don't have plans, hey, me and Trees, Leah Renee and Big Trees in the four one nine grind. We're gonna be at Southland Parking Lot for the Financially Lit, um, Fair. And man, listen, it's about, if you want to be financially free, if you're tired of being broke, if you want to get your life. You better make sure you're there. Three to six, Southland Parking Lot, Glendale Avenue. Um, Financially Lit, Leah Renee and Big Trees gonna be there on the mic, uh, four one nine grind is gonna be there. We're gonna be doing a live remote. Make sure you guys come out. Make sure you come out. The weather's gonna be beautiful.
Beautiful.
There's no excuse.
And you know what, Leah? Also, what's happening Saturday, you could, you could ride with the best on-air personalities. Is they have another event with the Hill of the Hood with Gutter Dave, Albert Prince, Bill, Devon Fagan, they'll be, they'll be here to talk more about it. But that's also Saturday from one to three. So Saturday is a beautiful day to just get in the car with your, your family.
And get out there.
And just get out there a little bit.
And do something positive.
Stop saying ain't nothing to do.
Stop saying there's nothing to do. Get out there and do something positive.
I know, I want to stop being broke, so I'm definitely gonna be financially.
Definitely gonna be at the Financially Lit event. Um, Hill the Hoods, yes, like, we may, gotta make sure we get out to that event too. Because there are so many great things going on in the community. We cannot sit up here and say we want to make a change and then don't show up for things, so. Have fun this weekend. It's gonna be beautiful. It's gonna be a beautiful weekend. As far as traffic's concerned, there is a crash right now on US twenty-four eastbound. Near the, um, near four seventy-five. Actually, it's that ramp. The ramp that goes from twenty-four eastbound to get onto four seventy-five is closed. So if you go that way, you're gonna have to choose an alternate route. I would just say to keep going a little further down twenty-four eastbound. Um, do a safe and legal U-turn and then use the westbound ramp to get onto four seventy-five. Um, just make sure whatever you're doing, you're doing it safe. No texting and driving, no distracted driving. And just make sure you're safe out there on those roads. Be safe and take your time and that's your weather and traffic for the day.
Dope with that traffic. She like westbound, southbound, eastbound. I don't know which way the hell that she going. Just make sure you listen to what she say on the traffic report. Drive safely. I like what she said. Make sure you know texting, distracted driving, whatever that might be.
Yes.
Be, be careful because Leah, there has been so many accidents because people, other people are being distracted. And it's not necessarily just texting. It's just our mind is somewhere else while we're driving. And we're all guilty of it. And it can cost you your life. So, as you said, drive safely. Leah, I like your four one nine Hustle and Grind shot. The city's been showing a lot of support.
They have.
We'll have, we'll have shirts this weekend. I know you had a lot of family members that say, hey, give me a T-shirt.
Yep, yep. I got family members now down in San Antonio, out in LA.
That's rocking it.
Rocking my, rocking the four one nine grind shirts, rocking our shirts. So it's beautiful, it's a beautiful look. Um, we appreciate all the love and support, man. It's been going crazy. We just did our financials for the month. And listen, we appreciate, we so, so appreciate the love and support because without y'all, we can't sit up here and do this every day.
And Leah, why is it so important that we show them love with the finances? And I say that because you, you, earlier you said, get you a shirt is twenty dollars. But where does that twenty dollars go? Where does that help go so that those that's listening on iHeart Radio, those that's following us on YouTube and Facebook? What's some of the things that we do that we can give back because people give to the show?
Yeah, I mean, we have a mentor program that our executive producer and creator has put together. Jesse, shout out to him and shout out to Dr. Vic. They have so many creative and great intelligent ideas and visions. And it's just great to be a part of a team, you know, with people who think like that. And so we've, uh, hired interns and we take care of our interns, you know, we make sure we give them stipends, we make sure they got.
Clap it up, clap it up, clap it up.
Food to eat, you know, we just.
Jay like, hold up, I'm weighing no mines.
Right. We got you, Jay, we got you. Um, you know, Dwan was in here eating alligator rice yesterday. So from Hot Box Bistro, shout out to our girl, uh, shout out to our girl Keitha. She's one of our sponsors over there at Hot Box Bistro. So yeah, I mean, what we do, we, not only do we take care of our interns, but we give back to the community as well. The things that we're doing, um, doing these live remotes, doing different stuff that we do in the community. You know, right now, we're just giving back to the community with, with our, with our talents, with our grace. And so you guys giving to us and supporting us allows us to be able to do the things we do in the community.
Me help you.
Help me help you, okay? And we appreciate the love and support. We really do.
When we say that, we have our, uh, we have our speed promoting, where we promote other businesses and services. So we really get a chance to give back and people can see the give back. So again, thank you to all those that's been grinding with us. Thank you for the hearts, the loves. This is the number one urban podcast show. And when we become the number one local podcast in the city, the numbers will go up. I'm just gonna tell you, but it's gonna go up and it's affordable. Do you know when you can do things that you can afford, Leah? You feel so much better?
Yes, yes.
You ever paid a bill? You was like, ooh, thank you. That bill was paid.
Yes, 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 I have, I have. And it's usually the ones that aren't so expensive.
The little ones.
Yeah, the little ones.
Well, again, we want to thank you for watching the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show, brought to you by Hot Box Bistro's. As well as Lima Humadot. If you have, if you're struggling with substance abuse, mental health, behavior health. Please, please, don't, you don't have to struggle no more. There are resources and there are people that care about you. There are services that care, that customize to your journey. Because oftentimes, Leah, people want you to help me and get fixed. No, this is a journey.
Yes.
Recovery is a journey. So make sure you call Lima Humadot, the Joshua Treatment Center, at one eight 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 seven two eight twenty-seven thirteen. And Leah, that kind of goes back to, you had such a great, a great topic of discussion yesterday with Mental Health Monday. Cuz we was checking, people gotta check to, gotta, gotta assist to get a, a check in. I like what Jesse said. He said every so often, we need to go get a yearly mental health check.
Just like in a physical, physical examination, we need to get a mental examination every so often. Definitely keep your mental maintained. Um, I do just want to say shout out to one of our very loyal listeners, my boy Stevie Steve. Um, he says, early voting starts today. So, um, you know, definitely make sure you're getting out there, making sure you're registered, making sure you are ready to go, ready to vote. If you don't have the time to, you know, do it early, just make sure that you are registered and you're set to go. You know where to vote, you know what you need to do. If you don't know, you know, get in touch with us and we'll try to get you the resources you need to help you figure out where you need to go to vote. So yes, thank you, Steve, for letting us know that. Um, early voting starts today.
In person, early voting. And the lines has been crazy. People are, people are already lined up to do in-person early voting. Early voting started where you can vote by mail, but now today, October sixth, you can vote in person. And Leah, them folks, social distancing COVID, folks is at those polls today.
Feel really good. And actually, I would encourage people to go, get up and go to the place.
I say get up and take somebody with you. Don't just go.
With you. But what I'm saying is, don't do the mail-in thing because there's been a lot of stories about the USPS and the mail. And, and just, you know, uh, things getting lost and, uh, you know.
So easily, Leah, easy, because some people just don't have, at this point, you don't know, we don't know everybody's situation.
True too. So I, okay, I'm sorry, you're right. Any able body, if you're an able body and you're able to get up and go to a polling station. You know, yeah, I'm just saying, in my opinion, I think we should, I'm saying for your own benefit, it's, I think it's better to go do it in person instead of trusting your mail-in.
Even waiting in line and all that time.
Been waiting in line because if you're serious about voting and getting your vote counted, I, me personally, I'm not trusting the mailbox. I'm just not, so.
But no.
You're right, that is my view though, my view.
So again, just make sure that you, you register to vote, you vote, and you get somebody to vote. Cuz I still got the challenge. And I, again, I know there won't be anybody in the country that's gonna beat Big Trees in the challenge of getting a first-time voter. Not a re, uh, re-register voter, a first-time voter to vote in this twenty-twenty election. And also today is the first day you can vote in person. So get ready cuz the election is November third. And, uh, there's gonna be some, I would say, Leah, there's gonna be some changes. I don't know what those changes might look like. But I do believe there's gonna be some changes with, uh, some of this administration. I don't know what, and it's already some changes cuz one of them got COVID. So number forty-five got COVID again. Speedy recovery for all those that's impacted, not just, I don't, cuz you don't wish that bad on no one, right? Cuz you don't know if it might take them out, but.
Yeah.
And there are so many people that's connected to President Forty-five that it might impact them. So again, we want everyone to be safe, wear the, rock the mask, do what you do. And that's why I love here in the studio that we keep things sanitized. We keep this place. One thing about you, Leah, you wiped out immediately, uh, with us growing as we do to make sure that this place is a safe place for those to come into the door. Leah, so when we talking about being safe and mental health, it's some folks out here, their mental health ain't good because, uh, the child support.
Support, but you know what? Before I get to that child support and what it's doing, how it's affecting some people out here. I do just want to say, because we, cuz you were talking about the coronavirus, that was part of my trending topics was that there has been a spike. There, off the top. There has been a spike in the coronavirus cases. Um, just because they've lifted the lockdown and we are somewhat getting back to normal, the kids are going back to school, a lot of people have gone back to work, whatever. It's still very serious and it's still very prevalent. And they're saying that it has spiked in twenty-one states. Wow. Wisconsin and Minnesota are two of the states that has spiked the most in. So we need to make sure that we are continuing to social distance, be safe, wear your masks. This thing has not gone away, it's not going away, so.
And it's interesting, when some of those, some, some of those studies, Leah, have they said, with those two particular states, some of the precautionary measures that they have taken? Have they mentioned some of those things since they seen a spike in numbers?
No, they haven't mentioned any, any precautions that they're taking. But what, another fact that I did find, um, was that they said during the months, basically during the summer months. Um, it spiked the most in people of the age of twenties, like during the tw, the people from the age of like twenty to thirty, basically. That it spiked the most in that age range during the summer months. So all those social gatherings, people, you know, taking flights, living their best life, you know, and it's caused a rise in the twenty-year-old age group. So we have to be careful, we have to be safe. Like you said, let's just continue to social distance, let's continue to be cautious and, you know, we can't.
Wash your hands.
Yeah.
Do this, do the smart thing, especially now, uh, with the sniffles and how the weather might change. You might feel that little piece in your throat, you like, uh-oh, what's going on? So make sure you get you some emergency.
Right.
Make sure you're building those immune systems because it is important, especially when, not just thinking about yourself, Leah. When you are around other people, especially being parents, man, there's no way I would want my son or my nieces and nephews to get COVID based on me.
Exactly.
So make sure that you are practicing all those different practices because it's real, Leah.
And I'm just gonna have a trees moment to add some comedy. If you're one of them people that was saying that like, since you started wearing masks, you noticed that like you got bad breath now?
It's funny you say that cuz that goes right into my, that goes right into the state.
Listen, if your breath stinks when you wear your mask, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but your breath has been stinking? And you're just smelling what you've been exposing everyone else to all this time.
And if your breath.
Brush your teeth, use that mouthwash, floss, get your breath together, keep a peppermint in your mouth if you need to. I don't know, but if your breath stinks now, because, it's not cuz of the mask. Don't try to blame it on the mask. It's cuz you have stank of breath.
And if your breath stinks virtually, handle that.
Hey, I didn't even know you had that written down on that. You see how we be right here? That's my, that's my, that's my bro right there.
Absolutely. So look, if your kid's breath smell bad virtually, that's something you need to work on. Make sure you brushing your tongue, underneath your tongue, gargling. Teach your kids how to properly brush their teeth. Cuz they'll just brush their teeth and forget all about their cheeks, the roof of their mouth.
Everything. They, they, they'll try to forget brushing their teeth altogether. My son does not like to brush his teeth.
It look like our interns don't either, but it's cool. Shots, y'all should see the look. For those that's listening on iHeart, ooh, if I could have just took a picture or a selfie.
I know, I'm ready to beat that ass.
That boy better keep his mouth shut. Hey, right here on the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show. If you have great music, great content, please send it to info at the four one nine dot, the four one nine grind dot com. Uh, I might, my camera might go off if it is the intern exec. Might cut me off right now, uh, because he didn't like the joke, but it's all right. Uh, just work through your mask. And if your, if like Leah said, if your mask stink and you the only one been wearing it, that need to tell you something.
Yeah, for real. So now anyway, back to those off-the-top trending topics. Um, you know, Taraji, our girl Taraji P. Henson, man, I love her. She's so dope. She's so inspiring. Have you ever like listened to her story?
I have. Actually, I reached out to be a part of her mental health, uh, show that she is, that you're gonna talk about.
Well, look at that. How did you know I was gonna talk about that, Trees?
I think we listened to the same show this morning. So we got.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, man, Taraji P. Henson, she's got her own new talk show that's coming out.
What is it called?
Amazing. It's, um, a mental health show.
Called what?
I don't know.
It's all right. No, cuz it's pretty dope. Uh, it's called Peace of Mind.
Oh, I love that.
Peace of Mind, Mental Health Show.
Got you here, Trees.
With her and, uh, Johnson, Tracy Johnson.
Tracy Johnson, yeah. Um, and she just turned fifty last week, so happy birthday to her.
Fifty?
Man, fifty where? Okay, that, listen, I'm trying to look like that when I get to fifty.
Damn, too much.
And she just married this fine, uh, little young thing, um, that put a rock on it, uh, not that long ago. So shout out to her, man. I ain't mad at her.
Big shout out to all the older ladies that getting them a young brother. And big shout out to the younger ladies getting them a older dude. What up?
Yeah, our girl Beyonce, uh, she's definitely in the news because she paid for, I mean, first of all, anybody who knows anything about Queen B knows that she is a philanthropist. And, you know, she's the epitome of it. She does a lot for, to give back. So she paid for a whole wing at a hospital, a whole wing of people. She paid their COVID expenses for their COVID care. So I was just like, dang, now, I, I can only imagine what that bill was looking like, like, and she took that on, she paid for it. And that was just an amazing thing. So shout out to her for all the work that she does.
Her and Jay, really, cuz they're doing, they're doing some great humanitarian, some things that we wouldn't even know about.
Yeah.
Uh, paying for people legal assistance. But one thing that I do know, uh, that they take the headlines, but they are being smart with their collaborations. Because also she's collaborating with Adidas.
Yes.
On some different things. But a lot of the main celebrities, Leah, they connect with, because of their, because of their name, they could connect with other groups to get things done. And it's not just a one-time commitment. Uh, I think the commitment that she's doing with Adidas would be a three-year.
Yep.
Uh, a three-year, uh, commitment worth, uh, up to ten, ten, ten million dollars.
Man, I see.
Uh, big shout out to all of the celebrities.
Yes.
And icons that we say that use their platforms, Leah.
And just people in general, because there are a lot of donors who aren't celebrities or icons or, they're just regular people who have worked hard and got a lot of money. And they donate, uh, or, you know, they give back. They give to foundations, they give to, you know, um, organizations and that's just a beautiful thing.
And, and I'm glad you said that, Leah, because again, we want to thank all those that's grinding with us this morning. Uh, when you have the ability to have the relationships, Leah, to get things done. Do you know how beautiful that is when you, how many of y'all always say, I know this person, I know this person, I know that person? But can you activate the relationship to help you?
Right.
So people know a lot of people, and that's what I really pride myself on, using the City Park League is, you can know a lot of people. But how can you activate them people to help you with a common goal? Just like when we do our giveaway. Some of the times, Hot Box Bistro's.
Right.
We can send ten people to Hot Box Bistro's this, today. The next ten people, call Hot Box Bistro's at four one nine six nine oh forty-nine ninety. The next ten people eat for free today.
Dang.
Call Hot Box Bistro, our sponsor. The next ten people eat free today. And you know why we can do that? Because Hot Box Bistro is a friend of the show and us, and we can get it to have.
Yes.
Do you know how strong that is? So when we talk about seeing celebrities and other people, when you have relationships, it don't necessarily mean you gotta pull it out your pocket.
That's right.
Now, I'm not gonna repeat that again cuz that's, Hot Box got a cost to some meal. But when you have relationships to get things done, Leah, how can you access your, your relationships? I think that's dope. And like you said, there's some everyday people that's not in the limelight, but Leah, they might say, I'll help you, Leah. What, what do you need me to do?
Exactly.
And they will be willing to help. That is a beautiful thing when you can help others with your platform.
Yes, amazing. And so I just definitely, again, we want to thank all of our donator, our donors, I said donators, all our donors and all our sponsors.
Yeah, cuz we got a lot of people.
We have people who have been donating. So, um, you know, shout out to our donors and our sponsors. We appreciate it. We need you, we love you, and we thank you.
And that's big. I think Leah, today calls for, let's show some love to this, who's on the grinders? Who's grinding with us this morning?
We got our grinders.
Yeah, make sure we, make sure we show them some of, and when she say your name, make sure you hit the heart button so that we know that you in the house. Hear me?
Yes, showing love to Anthony Burrows, Amy Nicole Meredith, Keith Henry, Delane Depp, Delane Depp, Stevie Steve. Derek, BJ, Kevin Smith, Tonetta, Z, Derek Wiggins, Jesse, our boy. My girl, Kofet Bigtable, Zady, Toledo Glass City Basketball Club. Hey, hope you guys are having a good day. Brandy Brown, hey, girl, she's on the live. Uh, Cassandra Langford, uh, Jalen Jalen. Who else? Mir, Mir Riley, Breezy, my brother Marcus Williams, shout out to MW and Sons, Poncho Ledesma, Nisha Davis, Dion Thompson.
What up, Mr. Ledesma? That's my, that's my classmate Springfield. We in the, in the building. What's up, Poncho?
Man, shout out to all y'all. Shout out to everybody who tunes in every single day, who wakes up with us. We so appreciate you, grinders. We love that you guys, like, we got that whole new term coined, our grinders, the rising and grinding.
From Miss Amy Nicole.
I love that, yes. Amy Nicole grinded that and, I mean, grinded that, coined that phrase, and now we got grinders. So I love that. So, okay, now.
Uh-oh, this is about to be Expect the Unexpected. This is a all new Rise and Grind Morning Show, presented to you by Hot Box and Lima Humadot. Expect the unexpected.
Yeah, you know, like as Trees was saying, we do like to show a lot of love. We show a lot of love. However, life isn't always about the love, is it? Love.
Tough love, tough love.
Love sometimes turns into, uh, and then that turns into. Love sometimes turns into, uh, and then that turns into, and then raw turns into child support.
This shit about to heat up.
Hey, so, okay, first of all, I'm gonna go back to my off the top trending topics. Um, today in the, in the trending topics, Black Rob was talked about.
Like whoa.
Whoa, everybody remembers Black Rob from back in the day. She was whoa.
When you don't know the words.
Whoa. Okay, so y'all know what I'm talking about though. Okay.
But we know the whoa though, we know the whoa.
So Black Rob has come out and basically he's, uh, he did an interview saying that, listen, like, I'm effed up, like, I'm broke out here. Like, I get money, I'm a go-getter. Y'all know what, you know, what my name in this game has been. However, child support has killed me, he says. Child support has killed him. It is why he's basically broke. Um, he says he's still dealing with child support. They said that when he first got signed to Diddy, uh, Diddy gave him three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars and, um, he's been just getting net, you know, he's just been getting beaten down with child support ever since. So then I got to thinking about Dr. Dre, because of course we all know that Dr. Dre and his, his estranged wife have been in, um, blogs and all over the media because they're going through a nasty divorce right now and the woman is trying to get him for like some crazy obscene amount of money. I think it was like twenty million dollars a month. Then now just recently she came out and she's requesting an immediate one point five million dollars just in attorney fees. So she wants her attorney fees paid for, then she wants twenty million dollars a month. And I was trying to see if I could find if there was something just specifically for child support, but I think their children are grown. So there may not be child support, but she's definitely trying to get alimony. She's definitely trying to take him for pretty much everything he has. And, um, I don't know. So that's the topic of this conversation. I mean, we're talking, we could talk child support and just talk, you know, alimony and all this type of situation because they kind of go hand in hand. So what do you guys feel about things like child support and alimony? Um, well, let, let's stay with child support for right now. Let's stay with child support. What do you think about child support, Mon trees?
Actually, I want to hear from the viewers. Want to say again, good morning to Dion Thompson. Give us a call this morning. Right now, what's your thoughts on child support? Call us at
What's on your mind? Give us a call at four one nine five four oh three five six six. We want to hear from you.
That's right. Four one nine five four oh thirty five sixty six. Call right now, call right now. What is your thoughts on child support? See, child support for, for me, it's a little different, which I didn't know I was getting into an entanglement with child support. Because at the time, um, me and my son's mother, we were, there was a change in our employment status.
Okay.
So we went and I did not want, and we did not want our child not to have healthcare.
Right.
So we went there together to get that. Now, I didn't know that was
You went where?
We went to, uh, Department of Human Resources to get, uh, healthcare, to get a Medicare.
So you didn't go to child support, you went to like, say, job and family services, try to get, uh, healthcare.
Healthcare. But it turned into child support. And man, when them folks bite down on you, it's like, wait a minute, we came to y'all for assistance, y'all really take, so I can imagine those that don't pay or having their headache and their trials with child support, that shit is vicious.
Really?
And like, uh, I heard the, the show this morning as you were talking about with Black Rob, man, they, they make it tough for anyone, even, even, even moms that have to pay child support. But what it does, Leah, it causes a chain reaction. So now it causes people to do dumb shit.
Yeah, yeah.
It causes people not to love their, it causes to have to make a decision on, if I'm gonna take care of my child with the love and care, or I'm just gonna send the money.
Right.
So some dads, some people feel if I'm paying you all this money, you take care of it. See, and that's the thing when we talk about bringing the government in the bed with us.
Yeah.
When we laid up and did this thing, it was all, I love, I love you that look.
I want you to have my baby.
But now all of a sudden, these folks saying you gotta pay this money, I just, I, my thoughts is, how do they accumulate this? Like, how do, what's they, what is the?
What is your math equation?
How do you come up with these numbers that people owe for so much child support, Leah? Do you think that, do you think if you did not get married with someone, Leah, that you should put, that that man should be on child? If you have a, a child with that man, should that man be on child support if it doesn't work out?
Well, listen, I feel like
Call in right now.
I feel like everything should, is like on a case by case basis. No situation is the same, right? Because there are a lot of effed up women using the system in a, in a effed up way. And I don't condone that. I don't agree with that. I think that's effed up. Um, I know of good fathers who have been taken through the wringer and that, that's not cool. I don't, I don't appreciate that. I don't condone that. However, then there's the other side of it where some women or men had no choice. Their hand, they felt like their, their hand was forced because at the end of the day, I have this other person, and we not just gonna say dads or moms, because there's a lot of single dads out here now who done took over, they done got rights, they done went through, you know, went through some fights to get their kids. You know, even shout out to my boy Trucking Sosa, he just, um, got custody of his daughter down in Georgia and went down to get her. And he was, you know, posted about it and how happy he was and, and that was a fight he was going through for a long time. So there's lots of fathers out there too, you know, so whoever, if you're in a situation where you're doing right by your child or you're doing right, you know, you're doing what you're supposed to do, I feel like, no, like, why get child support involved? You know, like, if, if, if both parents are doing, I mean, you know, as a parent, what it takes to raise a child. And I'm not just talking about coming through, you know, when school starts with a bag of clothes from the booster that you only spent a hundred fifty dollars for.
Oh, you know them type of people.
Yeah. Okay, so like, that's not enough. You, you coming through doing that once a year is not enough. Your child eats every single day, three sixty-five days a year. You know what I mean? Lights be on twenty-four seven, you know? Gas, like, all these different things cost. So if your child isn't living with you either half the time or full time, you're not, you, you don't have those expenses. You know what I mean? You don't have those extra expenses that you're incurring like the other parent does. You know, a lot of people will say something like, oh, well, you would have had them bills anyway. Yes, but my electric bill would be a lot less if I had just me and didn't have two other children. You know what I'm saying? So
But they chose to have that though. You chose to have the kids.
I did, but so did you. We both did. So we both need to pay for them.
Oh, don't go nowhere. We're gonna go to a break right now, because this thing is about to get real juicy. This is the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show presented to you by Hot Box and Lime and Humid. Hey, don't go nowhere.
If you're tired of church as usual and you're looking for something invigorating, exciting with passion, then the Greater New Psalmist Baptist Church, thirty-two fifty-one Glendale is the place for you. We are a people that's determined to occupy all streets while cultivating cultural change. The only thing's missing is you. Meet us at three two five one Glendale Avenue as we continue to be relevant and occupy all streets while cultivating cultural change.
What's going on, everybody? This is, uh, Lance Self is who I am.
And I am Arlinda Self.
And we are the selves and here to present our show called Self-Explanatory.
Yes, it's our podcast presented by four one nine grind.
That name just has a ring to it. Self-explanatory. I feel like we about to explain what the shit. This is true. I feel like that's what it's about to be.
Well, I think we're gonna talk about a couple of things. We're gonna talk about marriage, of course.
Okay.
Um, we've been married, what, two years now, right?
Two years, been together for eight.
Right. Oh, my goodness. It's a long time.
Y'all gonna ask what took so long?
What did it take? You know, we'll get there.
Self-explanatory.
We're gonna talk about blended families.
Yeah.
Praying for your spouse, gender roles, living with family members.
Woo.
Um, cheating.
Uh-huh.
Raising kids, um, family upbringing, being there for your spouse, finances. Um, being a wife and a husband, trying to be together and be individuals at the same time, which is one of the one things, um,
Took a while.
It's taken a while, but it's the fun part. We're learning that.
That's what marriage is. It's a process. It's a life journey. It's not an overnight thing. Yeah, because, you know, uh, I know there's a lot of days where I'm trying to be individual. I get on your nerves because of my individual ways. Uh, I can tell you one thing for damn sure though, definitely get on my nerves. It'd be a lot. She definitely gets on my nerves, but I love her.
I get on your nerves?
Yes, it's possible. You do a lot. What's wrong? What's the problem? What's the, what's wrong? Hey. I am Lance Self.
And I am Arlinda Self.
And this is the Self-Explanatory Podcast presented by four one nine grind.
Listen on Apple Podcasts, iHeart Radio, Spotify, and wherever podcasts are heard.
I'm about to ride with you all night, la-la, my babe. I'll owe you none, baby, let's get this jump, huh? I'm about to roll you some, la-la, my babe. This right here, lil' fire, sit back, smoke it high, I'm about to ride with you all night, la-la, my I'll owe you none, baby, let's get this jump, huh? I'm about to roll you some, la-la, la. I'm about to roll you some, la-la, la. I'm about to get this jumping, la-la, la. She know me, I'm a car, I'm a boss, take no loss, slide that thong in the road like, ahh. She don't love, this white house no glove, and they all forgot, it's many money more, so you can love her. See, I'm a folder, with a grandma more, she gon' do them all like, ahh. I double back, hit it twice, huh? We're all night, swung it right, see, I don't even need the lights, my pipe game so right. We're all night, no Superman, I'm alright. Man, this vibe right, it's this vibe right, and man, this vibe right, and baby, fire light, and baby, do me that light, ahh. This right here, lil' fire, sit back, smoke it high, I'm about to ride with you all night, la-la, my babe. I'll owe you none, baby, let's get this jump, huh? I'm about to roll you some, la-la, my babe. This right here, lil' fire, sit back, smoke it high, I'm about to ride with you all night, la-la, my babe. I'll owe you none, baby, let's get this jump, huh? I'm about to roll you some, la-la. Add them, subtract whatever you feel, don't go, I don't expect all of them to stay. No, I can't believe that you would do me so bad. Hit the pause button right now and press rewind. Things replay in my mind about a thousand times. Every red flag you show me is flying high. You've got the wrong one. I'm so messed up in my head, I can't be sure. You might say insecure, I say trust issues. Now I'm moving different, say I'm acting new. You've got the wrong one. You got me, and I can't help but wonder where would I be? If I treated you different from the start? And held on to the mystery of my love. You've got the wrong one. If ignorance is bliss, then I'm naive. Cause everything you tell me, I believe. You know just what to say to get to me. You've got the wrong one. I blind myself with passion, cause I got faith. We blame it on perception just to be safe. But that's a misconception, you're taking advantage and you've got the wrong one. You got me, and I can't help but wonder where would I be? If I treated you different from the start? And held on to the mystery of my love. You've got the wrong one. I've dreamed of all the ups and downs, but I like this. I'm anxious for a tangible peace of mind. And I know you might think that I'm running by you, making it funny, cause they know something I know. You got me, and I can't help but wonder where would I be? If I treated you different from the start? And held on to the mystery of my love. You've got the wrong one. You got me, and I can't help but wonder where would I be? If I treated you different from the start? And held on to the mystery of my love. You've got Things replay in my mind about a thousand times. Every red flag you show me is flying high. You've got the wrong one.
Good. Tuesday morning. It is October sixth, the first day of in-person voting. It is the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show with the beautiful Leah Renee and your boy Big Trees. Leah.
Hey.
I'm talking about you getting this thing started with this child support thing and this series. Again, thank you for the music. That was music brought to you by our friend from Toledo, Big Nick Hicks. Mate, Nate, that was a dope, dope song. And the song you heard before that was Mark White. Uh, that's my little cousin and I was, that was a clean version. So you know, Leah, we get some people with some dope Rise and Grind mixes this morning. Send in your
I love it.
I like, I think, Leah, we should do a music mix, but until we get to that music mix, we got a caller on the line that wants to weigh in about this child support. Good morning grinder. Good morning. How you doing?
What's up? What's up?
What's up? Who we got on the line?
This Marcus. Marcus with MW and Sons Lawn Care. What's up, everybody?
Yes, what's up, Marty Mar?
You what up, little Leah?
Hey, 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 hold up, hold up, hold up.
I'm doing good. How you doing?
Oh, you know, I'm just peachy. I'm off this Starbucks. I'm feeling real good and great.
Yeah, I see. Starbucks has something in it.
I, I wanted to, before you weighed in on the topic, Marcus, because I think people should know, when people should hear, we got people listening in on iHeart Radio, Apple Podcasts, this is the number one urban podcast show in the country, and we got people watching live. Few weeks ago, maybe about two and a half weeks ago, Mark, you, you put out a service that you was willing to give to the community for those that's listening. Man, can you, because I asked you to do a review, but I see it didn't get done yet, so I'm gonna have you do it. I'm gonna have you do a in-person by phone review. What happened with, what did you do? And what kind of responses did you get back from your community give back?
Well, I offered, I offered my service along with my friend Byron Daniels, but we offered my service, which is, uh, lawn care. And I have about, think about ten responses.
Wow.
So in response to that, I, um, I did three of them for free and then the other customers, you know what I'm saying? They, they paid me or whatever, but they new customers now, so.
That's amazing.
Offer, offer the four one nine grind, I got two, me ten new customers.
Wow.
I do appreciate that.
And Marcus, um, you know, Big Trees, he doesn't really know all of our history and, and everything. So make sure you tell everybody what happened before you started tuning in to the Rise and Grind Morning Show. What happened?
What you, what you mean? I don't know. A lot of stuff that happened.
Remember that one day, remember that one day when I was over your house and I said, Marty Mar, do you watch my shows? And what you say?
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. I was like, yeah, Leah, but like, you really got on me. You was like, man, you don't be sharing my stuff for nothing. I'm like, Leah, I support you. I'm just busy.
No, that's not what you said. That's not what you said. I'm gonna remind you.
I know, I'm gonna tell you what I said. I said, go ahead, tell, tell me what I said, Leah.
He said, no, I don't want
Just because it's, no, I would, no, no, let me, I'll tell you what I said. I said, Leah, just because it's you don't mean I'm gonna share. You know what I'm saying? I share what I believe in.
But not what you sharing, not what you tuning into and not what you sharing every morning.
I'm sharing it because I'm actually watching it. When I wasn't watching it.
You supposed to say the Rise and Grind Morning Show.
Oh, the Rise, oh, I'm sorry, the Rise and Grind Morning Show. But when I wasn't actually watching it, I wasn't sharing it. I wasn't just sharing it because it was just Leah.
I know.
And you know what I'm saying? Like, but now, but now I'm watching and now I'm sharing and I'm supporting because I believe. Because, but that, you know, like, with real, that's what be going on in our city though. Like, we, a lot of people would just share something because it's you and they ain't even took, took one second to watch it. You know, I actually have to watch or read what I share. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
That's pretty much what I'm trying to, what I was trying to say. Not I didn't support you.
Yeah, bro, because when you did that, she used you as an example, bro, of that situation. Uh, and we gonna talk about, that's gonna be another show though, about what support looks like. Because yeah, Marcus, you caught heat for not sharing and what she wanted you to see. Uh, but
But we appreciate you tuning in now and we see that it, you know, did wonders for your business. We appreciate, uh, being able to promote your business and you see some, um, you know, some business from that. So that's dope.
Right.
And our Cash App is the four one nine grind. and our cash app is the four one nine grind
I got you I got you man I got you
Leah didn't got the bell ringing she got the expected unexpected child support I saw what you said in the post in the comments but what's your thoughts on child support
I just think like I just wonder why child support is based off of what the other person makes and not what the child needs you know what I'm saying like I can go out here and make billions of dollars and I gotta give it to my baby mom that ain't right like this child don't need fifty thousand dollars a year month you know what I mean like it's that's what I think is wrong with child support like I agree with it if the father is absent yes I do agree with it but I don't think it should be based off of solely what the man make I think it should be a cap on that like it make me not wanna report my income because I gotta give seventy percent of it to my kids you know what I'm saying like and they don't even need it and it's for like you know what I mean like I think child support should be based off both parents you know what I mean like based on the needs you know what I'm saying not 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 just oh he got a million dollars so she need two hundred and fifty thousand no way why like what what would it send him that make me to go make more money I gotta keep giving more money up the more I make that don't make sense to me you know what I'm saying
and that's a lot of people
that's basically how I feel
alright so there's a lot of people that feel that have that similar feel so one thing that we not just gonna just throw out blame general statements when you say the basic needs of the child man mom or dad what do you mean specifically about providing uh what that child needs if it's not just financially
it's not yeah I mean it's not just financially but it's like a lot of times men I'm just only speaking on men and far as custody and stuff
and don't throw us under the bus bro
I ain't gonna throw I ain't gonna throw us under the bus but like like if you like in a situation where you gotta go through child support and through custody um like they only give us limited time so we gotta make the best of our time they don't say like man this is like in some cases it's like that but like when you just like wanna be a good father and just go through with it the right way like I'm gonna go to child support y'all gonna tell me when I could see the kid every other weekend whatever right and you go along with that that's what women should expect they shouldn't expect more because you decided to take this route instead of me and you getting together and we decided what what we should do for our kid we let somebody else decide like hey this what you need to do so if I if I stand by that let me stand by that you know if I make more money I was paying you two hundred dollars a month when I was broke while that was working and now that I made you know what I'm saying this money you need more and I'm willing to help you know so yes naturally but what about when you making a hundred thousand like whoa and now you broke but they still expected you to pay what you was making when you was making a hundred thousand you know what I'm saying it's backwards
yeah I think that is a very big flaw in the system is that they don't keep like it's like everything is electronic nowadays you know what I mean there's no reason why if a situation like that happens where a man or a woman is say they're making a hundred thousand this year and then for whatever something happened and now this the following year they're only making they're making half that now child support come on now it don't take y'all three four or five years to to change adjust it like come on y'all should be able to adjust that right away and it should reflect what you're making but they're making but Marcus you're being contradictory then because you're now saying that once you start making more they shouldn't raise the child support but now you're saying if you make
what I'm trying to say is is like the I don't pay child support so the more money I make the more I give to my kids you know what I'm saying like
what's your thoughts on that Leah
so what difference does it make if that's what it is with child support then
because child support is like force and then it's a penalty behind you not paying child support you know with me with with me if I stop making money this year like it's no penalty I don't go to jail because I'm broke you know what I'm saying like you you a lot of men that go to jail because they broke you know then you got some men that just don't wanna do nothing that's a big difference you know what I'm saying but you got people out here that's really their lives is being changed because of child support they never hurt nobody they ain't never killed nobody or did nothing crazy but they in prison and that's better for their child that they in prison cause they owe this money
I feel what you're saying there I do
anybody with sense ain't gonna go to prison and they got money and they just not paying it you know what I'm saying I ain't going to prison for I'm a hundred I make a hundred thousand a year and I owe y'all five thousand dollars take this money
hey check this out Mark we want to thank you for the call man not cutting you off but we got another call thank you so much man and continue to support
for tuning in and thank you for calling in we appreciate you my brother
okay alright talk to y'all later have a good one
you too yeah no I mean he definitely
caller make sure you call back cause I see this is a hot topic
yeah he definitely had some great points and I do agree with uh you know a lot of the things he did say I mean at the end of the day I do feel like if you but see I'm I'm different and like I said cause in one minute he said if I'm if I went from making fifty thousand to a hundred thousand that shouldn't raise my child support but then in the next sentence he said well what if I go from making a hundred thousand to fifty thousand I shouldn't have to be paying the same okay so so I think it should matter based on what you're making because if you think about it if you're a real parent a real true parent who really loves your kids and really takes care of your kids you're gonna spend more the more you make regardless to whether child support tells you to or not right cause if I'm making you know what I'm making right now and I spend what I spend on my kids right now and then my check goes up and I'm making you know bringing in five hundred thousand a year my kids gonna get a check much higher than what they're getting now you know what I'm saying
solution
you know I don't know Trace I don't really know what the solution is
and that's where I don't get that's why I don't get into the ranting and ranting because we have to talk about issues with solutions caller make sure you call back because you right and it's really not and I and I won't say right or wrong but what solutions can we provide because we're in a time now we can actually change the culture it it comes with work it comes with documentation and it comes with the voices of those that's being impacted that's why with the CARES Act when they were talking about uh those that have to pay child support not receiving
stimulus check
the stimulus check nope folks talked it grabbed a lot of attention and they were able to make the change and the change was those that had to pay child support now gets a chance to receive this CARES Act the stimulus based on that so when I say that what's the solutions because we can always talk about what's not right and what but we got a chance to change the narrative
I mean I think the biggest solution that could help the best but I don't think a lot of people will follow is just going back to what we were talking about yesterday with therapy just because you your relationship ends with the child with the other parent you know of your child we have to learn how to go forward without one another without being enemies you know what I mean like and it's so easier said than done cause you know I mean like obviously it's not just gonna happen like that but I think a lot of that has to do with therapy like if we really took the time it goes back to what we said even with being financially free or trying to get out of a rut or what you gotta do the work we have to stop just breaking up and going our separate ways and being enemies and not you know yelling and cutting each other's heads off let's get together as parents because at the end of the day we have the same common goal and love and that's this child so what can we do to make sure that our child is gonna be productive successful and have everything that they need and want let's go get some therapy let's bring a third person in an unbiased person that can maybe help us both see each other's perspective in a different way you know and we can sort out some things because even though you broke up therapy will still help for family like you know family therapy and I think that's gonna be the biggest thing
and you heard it right here we're gonna take a quick break gotta go pay a bill the show is brought to you by Hot Box Bistro's Lime and Yum and Dope Expect the Unexpected and y'all don't wanna miss when we come back into studio right here on the all-new Rise and Grind Morning Show
why why we gotta hate each other why we can't just love each other why we gotta shoot each other why we can't just love each other yo look me in the face we won't even have to hate enough money we can chase let's uplift the race let's get to a place we can sit and talk face to face there's a lot that we relate you don't have to take the bait be a man anybody put a gun in hand anybody can throw their hands anybody can choke or slam anybody can chase a bag let's plan and get them bands let's plan to go get them meals get back and pay them bills tell me why you shoot tell me why you hate tell me why you can't get on your grind and choose your fate let go of anger let go of pain I know the wise I felt the same cops killing ops killing no different no difference jail cells graveyard same sentence I hopped off that porch with no regrets to take control of life I had to walk back up them steps tell me why why we gotta shoot each other tell me why tell me why why we can't just love each other rest in peace Mar rest in peace Romy rest of heaven wax RIP to all the homies can't forget Spider as a kid I was inspired he put rims on his tires so tall that you can climb him hug your people love your people it's time to change you been keeping score let's keep our people play a different game let go of evil let's be peaceful we've seen the movie change the sequel I was on those front lines went to war with the other side oh nine I was actor I'm not talking online I fought for respect and I fought for what's mine I fought for the gang and I fought for my side I fight today to break the cycle that type of life is suicidal that life ain't it I hopped off that porch with no regrets to take control of life I had to walk back up them steps all the hatred in the world it really hurts my soul another body in the street another life come cold another mother in agony watching life unfold but there is no console tell me why 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 tell me why we gotta hate each other tell me why why we can't just love each other tell me why why tell me why we gotta shoot each other too many people dying for no reason we gotta stop it we gotta break the cycle why we can't just love each other tell me why tell me why tell me why we gotta stop taking score we gotta start protecting our people uplift our people the biggest lie newest told is that you gotta die in disrespect there is no word in the dictionary I'm what we died for you shouldn't be neither imagined about you both day and night can't stop thinking bout what we can have I make mistakes boy but that's the past now I need something that's gonna last something that's better than saying it's better than catching a check I'm wondering you lost in your love I hope that you're giving it back don't you hurt me out here looking stupid cause I put my trust in Cupid fairy tales really don't exist anymore but I got a fantasy for it they say I lost my mind but I can fantasize can I fairy tales really don't exist anymore but somehow I still believe in this you said it's a waste of time but I can fantasize can I I just want my night and it's shining on me I'm your Cinderella but time is not a problem and I could be a queen just don't bring me no drama need you to be a king to take home to my mama I know you see it in my eyes baby I promise that I never lie baby so I hope you ain't surprised baby by the way I fantasize fairy tales really don't exist anymore but I got a fantasy for it they say I lost my mind but I can fantasize can I fairy tales really don't exist anymore but somehow I still believe in this you said it's a waste of time but I can fantasize can I fairy tales really don't exist fairy tales really don't exist but somehow I still believe in it but I can fantasize wake up in the morning with a smile you make me so happy as what my wow I don't care what others have to say your love is the greatest gift that'll come my way so
that's right it's the all-new Rise and Grind Morning Show presented to you by the four one nine grind and Hot Box Bistro's and Lime and Yum and Dope Treatment and Recovery Services in the studio right now in Toledo Ohio we have Leah we have one of the newest city council purses in Toledo Ohio make some noise everybody in the studio I'm geeked out cause it's a whole vibe y'all don't even know y'all don't even know y'all don't even know when your people in the building like this this not just a councilwoman Leah this my auntie this and
and then she came in and you know we were talking at child support before we went to break so she came with very interesting points and takes on it and I'm sitting here and talking to her about that so yes
so she jumped right into the fire Auntie how you well I can see this is a little weird now councilwoman McPherson how you feeling
I'm feeling real good real good
you look good too you look good how you doing this morning
I am so hyped I just
I love it I love it
early vote I was out there this morning come on people get out there early votes they standing in line get out
it was a lot of people out there
oh my they are lined up all the way around the building
wow Auntie you got a lot of people weighing in they hitting the hearts button I see you on your live people are showing a lot of love we want to thank you for taking the moment is this your first live interview
first live interview
what we giving up right here on the
right here on the four one nine grind Rise and Grind Morning Show
the number one urban podcast in the country and it's a little different Auntie so it ain't really broadcasting news it's not really radio we could say some shit that we ain't gonna say while you're here so I gotta watch this but Auntie we thank you councilwoman McPherson for you taking the time on this day so you went and voted and then you came in the studio to be around young folks
yeah and I'm excited too because got a bulldog in the house
and she got excited all week long when she knew you was coming she like what so it's been awesome 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 how you feeling
I am feeling great I'm a little sleepy but uh I've been outside in line since four thirty this morning
so did we give you a little bit of a burst of energy what's the vibe when you came into the studio
ah yeah
we woke you up didn't we
yeah you woke me up yeah
we love to wake everybody up in the morning
lot of energy
lot of energy
but you know Montree you you all the way live
this is the all-new Rise and Grind Morning Show it will be voted the best local podcast in the city with the best duo Leah Renee and your nephew It will be voted the best local podcast in the city with the best duo, Leah Renee and your nephew. So Leah, I want to kind of get straight to it because we have people listening on iHeartRadio, Apple Podcasts, YouTube and Facebook. So.
Look at her face.
Auntie, you popping right now.
You popping, I see.
So I want to say first, who is Councilwoman Cassandra McPherson? And Auntie, you might have to take them all the way back. So those that know you, know you as we bring it up to who you are today.
I am from the neighborhood. Avondale Posse.
Uh oh, uh oh.
Grew up there, went to Pickett School.
What's up, Pickett? Tigers is in the building.
Tigers in the house. Graduated class of nineteen seventy-seven from Libby High School.
Cowboys, throw the L's up. Oh, you see it, put it up on the camera, Auntie. Put the L over.
Cowboys for life, yes. Um, and um, wow, I am the proud daughter of Moseo and the late Elsie Hill.
Wow.
And um, this is, this is so wow, overwhelming. This is, um, and then to be here with my nephew, this is like wow. Trying to maintain with him.
Oh, you're talking about our show is overwhelming? I thought you were saying like being voted into city council.
That is overwhelming too.
Oh, I love that.
That is um, an awesome opportunity to serve um, my community that I have lived and was raised in and been around people all my life. And I have so many mentors that have helped me become the person that I am and um.
What about the kids? You gotta say what's up to the, you know, Danielle. Yeah, don't forget that.
My daughter Danielle.
What's up, girl?
Hey Danielle.
My son John Ross, who works at Jeep Credit Union.
What's up Jay?
And then my youngest daughter Genesis. She lives in Cincinnati.
And she probably watching because you on your live right now, Auntie. And if you look at your phone right now, you probably got people weighing in, saying stuff to you.
Oh wow.
That's my sis, that's what I see. I love it.
Beastie, Angenee Allen and Lanice, my interpreter.
She is excited this one.
Yes, I am so excited about everything, about voting, about being appointed to city council. Um, it has just been a, a, a real exciting ride.
Can I ask you, um, being excited and, and now being voted into this position, what is the first thing that comes to your mind when you think I'm making, I'm about to make, I'm about to make a move? What's your first priority on your agenda?
Okay, let me clarify. I was not voted in, I was appointed.
I'm sorry, appointed.
So there is a difference.
Yes, absolutely.
On my agenda, uh, I gotta look at my young people. I work at Scott High School.
Yay. Now Auntie, real quick, while you talk about that agenda, how did you get to TPS? How did you get to Scott High School? And what you do for the Toledo Scott Bulldogs?
I have worked for Toledo Public Schools for thirty-two years.
Wow, yes, thank you for your service.
I started at Stewart Elementary.
LP Stewart.
LP Stewart, um, as a recess aid.
Okay.
And um, went on to become a paraprofessional working with special ed students.
Oh, yes.
I have been with special ed now for about twenty-eight, twenty-eight years.
Thank you so much.
I am, I am in the high schools now. My longest tenure was at McKinley Elementary School.
Hey McKinley.
Bulldogs, Eddie McKinley Bulldogs?
No, what were we, oh, we were the Broncos. We were McKinley Broncos was the football team and Hornets was the basketball.
Okay, okay, gave y'all the Bulldogs, sorry Broncos.
Um, uh, that was, it was like, that was my calling. Education. So then, um, I went back to school. I went to the University of Toledo, um, studying in special education.
Shout out to UT Rockets, I went there too.
And um, I have been with Toledo Public Schools and it's been an awesome journey. Now I'm at uh, Libby, um, Scott High School. I got that Libby.
It's in, it's in her period.
I'm at Scott High School, but I work with Latonya Reed.
What? You giving us, what's up? That's my sister, that's the cousin. This is a real family affair in Toledo.
That's family and she is a Libby High School graduate too. And we are a team and it is, we have worked there together since I first started at Scott High School.
Wow.
And it was awesome because we were at Mont Branch Library and we said, wouldn't it be really awesome if we ended up working together?
Y'all spoke life?
And I went to our parabid session and a position was open. And when, they didn't know who the teacher was. And when I got to Scott, it was Latonya. I was like, wow.
Those that don't know the person that she, it's a family connection. And I don't want you to forget what Leah asked you about the agenda, but I say that to say, what has been one of your most promising moments, working with that community and those families that you would just say, I thank you and I appreciate what you've seen with the work that you did over at Scott.
Oh, I appreciate the experience and working with the students. And one of the things that I really enjoyed the most was Latonya and I, at the beginning of the school year, would go and visit our students before they came to school, to meet with our students. And a lot of our students from my neighborhood.
What?
Indiana, Belmont. So that was awesome. And so they saw me in the community.
Yes.
Ooh, that's huge.
That's so important.
I live in the community, they live in the community and they walk by my house. I have students to this day, shout out to Xavier. He comes by my house to see me all the time. When I was sick, he would come by my house to see me.
That's amazing.
So it is working in the community, living in the community. And over at Scott High School, community, I'm all about community.
Absolutely. So to Leah's point, with that mindset, Auntie, Councilwoman McPherson, I gotta get, I gotta get used to this, y'all. With that mindset and the upbringing that you had, how does that answer in the question that Leah asked you, your agenda and your purpose with this of leadership that you're in?
This opportunity is twofold. Um, I always say, everything is in God's own time.
Amen.
And so this is my time right now. And God had it.
Claim it is.
At this time, because I had went for city council before.
But he didn't put you on assignment back then. Now you're on assignment, his assignment.
And my agenda, young people. What's going on with my young people? We have lost too many young people to gun violence. And that's my agenda. I want to sit down and have a conversation with those head people. What can we do? We gotta look at this thing differently. I do not want to lose another young person to gun violence. And that's, that's my agenda.
Yes.
Twofold. I've got to learn this thing with city council and how this all operates. And so it's a lot. It's a lot, but I'm committed to it and I'm committed to serving my community. When I end my letters, I always end it with excited to serve. I'm excited to serve.
I love that.
But I've got to learn. So I don't want to go off as some people say half cocked. I want to learn it and then I want to move and I want to help. But I gotta help my young people, gotta help my young people.
So when you say you want to reach the young people and you want to sit down and have this conversation, is that more or less with um, other leaders to try to come to a point where what can we do? Or do you feel like a conversation needs to be had where you can get in front of a nice group of young people and have that conversation with them or like what exactly?
I would like to have a conversation with young people.
Yes.
Because in order to have young people buy in, we've got to have that conversation with them. We always want to make decisions for young people. And say it's about the young people, but we don't want to talk to the young people. So I would like to have a conversation with the young people. What is it? What's going on? Uh, why do you feel like this? And let's just have a conversation and ask those questions. And then yes, have to have a conversation with the leaders.
Right.
To see.
So that we can, yeah.
We can put it together, definitely with the leaders.
And implementing, yeah.
Exactly. But you know, I'm at Scott High School, so I can always walk around. Once the kids come back to school in the building.
Yeah.
We can uh, and have those conversations. But I got Montree, so he's gonna help me out.
Well, I would also like to say, um, you know, shout out to one of our sponsors, Dr. Brian Hall. He's on the live right now and he's actually.
From Greater New Salmas.
Yes, Greater New Salmas Church. He has a new show coming out with one of his, uh, one of the young people at his church called Teen Talk with Mariah. And she's going to be doing a show with, it's all young people, like she's the host, you know, it's all young people as guests. So I think it'd be great to have you come on that show and I'm definitely going to connect that. If you don't mind, we would love to have you on there.
Bishop, you know I'm down for you.
And he talking about, yes, exactly.
I got you, Dr. Hall.
And, and that is so huge and Leah, thank you for asking that question. Because oftentimes, like you said, Auntie, Councilwoman McPherson, and those that don't know, her maiden name is Hill. So those that know, uh, Cassandra, Cassandra Hill, so McPherson is her, her married name. So, but I, I'mma call it Auntie. So you and our, this is our podcast, we can talk. Auntie, I, I love that you say that about young people because many of our interns, they're looking and they're soaking this up, how to be in the leadership role. Coming from the neighborhood and the places that you have came from. And knowing many of their families, because if they was to tell you their families, you probably know their family. And so now they're looking at you as sitting at the seat of power, making the decisions on their lives. Huge.
Yes.
So when you say have a conversation, oftentimes Auntie, everybody just want to have a conversation, but don't want to put a plan of action. So you hear the conversation? What are some things Auntie that you say that once I hear what's going on, I would do my best to change what? To impact what based on the conversations that Leah, we're going to give you those platforms that you need to change what they see that they need help from someone who sees in the seat of power like yourself? How will you implement some of the things that they're suggesting?
I sit in a seat of power, but I don't sit alone.
Ooh, what you mean, girl? Hold up Auntie, girlfriend, what you mean Auntie?
So I sit in the power of councilwoman at large. But there is a council of twelve. So I don't sit alone. Once I sit down and have a conversation and take notes and see what the conversation is, then I gotta go back to the team and have a conversation with the team.
That's huge.
Because it's, it's all about the team. And once the team understands the plays, then we can move.
Somebody likes sports.
Yeah, I like that, I like that.
But wait a minute Auntie, because that's, that's so huge. Because oftentimes people get in these seats of power and think they can do it alone. You can't do nothing in Toledo alone and especially at the seat of power. So two, two things. Can you first tell the difference between a at-large city council person and what that means in your words? And being over a district? Last week, week and a half, we had Councilwoman Williams over District Four, sitting right in these seats. And we have Councilwoman Preston will be in as well as Councilman John Hoss will be on the show as well. What does it mean that you are a councilperson at large instead of over districts?
Okay, council district, they, they have.
Sections.
Sections of the community.
Okay.
Uh, areas. And that's what they contend with.
Okay.
Those constituents in their district will contact them.
Yep.
When they have issues.
Absolutely.
And that's the beginning of the conversation for them. As an at-large councilwoman, my understanding is that I'm all over. So the city.
Okay.
So my constituents are all of the above. Lucas County.
Absolutely.
So they can call me, once I learn my phone number. They can call me or they can email me and I will begin the conversation. If you have issues within your community, I would first ask you to call Toledo Engage. Engage Toledo.
Absolutely.
And put it to them first and then they will call us, inform us, or we can also look at it.
Absolutely. So with that seat of power and Leah, she said, they, she has the interest of the city where some constituents have districts or areas that they're concerned with. But you also have an opportunity, because all this is an opportunity and a learning opportunity. We got our uh, viewers and our listeners weighing in. Norma, that's, uh, Norma Jean is saying that it's all about the team.
Yes, teamwork makes the dream work.
Dr. Hall saying he loves it. Amy Nicole Meredith, married to one of the Merediths. She's saying yes. What other committees do you have an opportunity to sit on and serve as city council? When it talks about impacting the people that's listening right now? Because right now, many of your, your efforts and service will impact those that's listening. What other committees do you sit and serve on now that you are at uh, at-large city councilwoman?
As at-large city councilwoman, I will sit on several committees.
Okay, y'all take notes.
He's calling me out.
Just the ones that you know.
He likes to do that.
Expect the unexpected.
Recreation.
Recreation, hey, City Park League to the world. Keep talking. I thought somebody said that to, okay then, but go ahead though, don't get me started.
I had to say that one first.
Yeah.
Public utilities. Um, I will also serve on um, neighborhood development, small businesses. And we all serve on zoning. Off the top of my head right now, I can't call the other one.
And, 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 and that's, that's awesome. Those four right there Leah. And also as she mentioned, she said, if you have issues or you have concerns, please call Engage Toledo at 419-936-2020. Again, 419-936-2020. If you have any questions about concerns in your neighborhood, start there. As she said, as she begins to, to learn and see what need, the needs that need to be met. Leah, she mentioned some of the committees that she'll serve on. Utilities, that impact all of us.
Well, the one that I heard um, the most was because here at the 419 Grind, we love to showcase small businesses, especially local here in our community. And I heard you say that you sit on a committee that helps with small businesses and development. So people, anyone who's maybe a small business owner, who is trying to develop their brand, develop themselves, develop their business, you, that committee helps with that? We can reach out to that committee? I mean, how, what exactly?
You can reach out to that committee and remember, I'm new to this game too. So when you reach out, we gonna learn it together.
I love that.
I love it that you have um, Keira Shears.
Keith, Keith, Hot Box, Hot Box. Hot Box, wait, say it again Auntie. Hot Box?
Hot Box.
Hot Box.
Hot Box.
That's a proud sponsor, a small business of this show.
Well, you know, I went to school with her mama.
Hot Box? Hot Box.
And she's married to my nephew.
I love it.
Oh, Delisa, fight time. Oh, I got something for you Leah that they left too. But you know what? We're going to take a quick break. When we come back, we want you to call in, we're going to put the number up on the screen. We want you to engage in the conversation because we got more right here on the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show, presented to you by Hot Box and Lima Yumadop and Miss Myrtle Boykin Light. Thank you for being proud sponsors of the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show.
It's Sandy Brown, owner of the Toledo Threat Basketball Organization. And I have some great news. The Toledo Threat are officially joining the 419 Grind Podcast with our new show, Nothing But Net. On the show, you'll see athletes, coaches and even community leaders who have nothing but net careers. Now, they may have hit a few bricks along the way, but with hard work and dedication, they're now seeing a consistent shot within their careers. You can catch us right here every Wednesday at seven o'clock starting September thirtieth on the 419 Grind Podcast. Until then, nothing but net. Nothing But Net.
Harper.
Councilwoman Harper?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I wanted to be clear with her that I was seeking District Four.
Okay.
Because District Four is where I live.
Right.
And um, I'm up front.
Was that her district?
That's her district.
Got you, okay.
And she said, go for it.
I love it.
And so I did. In talking with Judge Puffinberger, um, I put in my application and he called me four days before he actually made the decision.
Wow.
And he said, can I do a Zoom with you?
That good old Zoom?
I was like, yes. And he was like, right now? And I was like, yes. I'm going to my computer now.
Where were you at? Where you got the call?
I was at home.
So you was already at the house?
I was at home. And so we did, we did the, we did the interview. Um, he asked the questions, I answered the questions, and he said he was going to um, turn in his decision that Thursday. I think I interviewed that Tuesday. And I was like, I'm thankful for the opportunity. And um, shout out to my president of my local Toledo Federation of Teachers Local 250, Kevin Dalton.
Make sure they, make sure they know-
Shout out to Kevin Dalton.
That you uh, that you gave him some love right here on the all new Rise and Grind Morning Show.
Yes, because I spoke with him about it also before I applied. And he encouraged me to do it.
Yeah.
But I got the call on Thursday night. I was out to dinner with friends and I got a call. And you know how you don't recognize numbers? Almost didn't answer.
Right, right, right.
Uh oh, we gonna talk about that later?
Almost didn't answer.
Almost missed that call.
Almost missed the call. And it, the call was from Matt Cherry, the president of City Council. Um, saying congratulations.
Awesome.
And following his call was the call from the mayor.
Oh wow.
And-
That night?
That night.
They bugging you at nighttime too, man?
I was like, wow, wow, you know?
Overjoyed.
Right. And I told him, I said, I'm out to dinner right now with my-
My food.
Perfect celebration, right?
Can I, can I call you back and have that conversation? And he said, yes. And so it was like, when I got off the phone, I was like, y'all.
And that wasn't nothing but God, God made sure that you was at a table with your friends celebrating in a moment when you were gonna get that call. See, everything that God does is strategically planned and right on time.
Yes. And not with just any friends. I was with special friends.
Right.
And we all know about special friends. When you, ain't nothing like your special friends, ain't it?
Yes, yes. And so I was, I was just excited.
Yeah, I bet.
I was sworn in, we were all sworn in on that Friday, and we had our first council meeting that following Tuesday. So when it's like-
Man, that's amazing.
You're into it, it's like boom, boom, boom. And it's like, wow, really? And I people say, well, you know, you're in a very powerful position. And I'm like, okay, if you say so.
Right.
I, it, I, it still has not-
Hasn't really settled in yet, right?
No.
And, and you know, Leah, before you ask the question, even some of our viewers that's listening on Facebook Live-
Definitely weighing in.
Sidney Haney say, hey, that's my choir mom.
Toledo Mass, woo woo.
Toledo Interface Toledo Mass Choir, yes, yes.
And uh, sending love out to Bishop Joseph Hall Jr. I met him over the weekend. He's all the way from Louisiana watching us. So thank you for tuning in. Um, what I wanted to ask you, um, you spoke earlier about your, your career in special ed and how you've uh, served in that, in that um, field for many years. Me personally, I'm a mother of a child who is in special ed right now. And um, my question, okay, I have, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to ask you, have you noticed or do you feel when you look around in that in schools or what? Cause I don't know exactly what your positions are. I don't know what you do, but when you're going out doing what you do in the special ed community, do you find that there are a lot more young black boys that are in special ed than there are Caucasian or any other race for that matter?
Yes.
And do you find that to be concerning? I do. That's why I was asking. Um, when I, when my son was in preschool, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to make this quick, but I'm just gonna give you a little background. When my son was in preschool, he was only four years old and he actually has an early birthday. So he had really just turned four. He was like a fresh off of three years old, okay, going into Head Start. And they came to me um, in the school year and said, we think that he may possibly have a learning disability. We want to have him evaluated. Long story short, I was like, okay, I might keep open mind because he could possibly, I don't know, you know, so I want to set my kid up for success. Let's have him evaluated and see what happens. They BS'd me through the whole summer. They waited until the end of the year to, to get him tested. And then they BS'd me through the whole summer. And then right when the next school year came into play, when he was going into kindergarten, they basically tell me at the last minute, yeah, he's been diagnosed um, as emotionally disturbed and he's gonna be in special ed now. And I'm like, whoa, huh, hold on, like emotionally disturbed? My child is not emotionally disturbed, you know what I mean? So it went from, let's see if he has a learning disability to now all of a sudden he's being termed as emotionally disturbed. And when he was sent to the school that he was sent to, when we got there for the open house, they're like, oh, oh, he, like, it was just the whole attitude that we received from that. And I'm not gonna put the school out there and the administration, but-
Thank you.
We weren't, we weren't, we weren't received well. And that's all I'm gonna say. And I, and what I will say is that there are a lot of mothers who are, I feel like being tricked into putting their kids into this special ed um, program or situation. And then when I got in the classroom, what I noticed was there are, they're mostly all young black boys. And that was concerning for me. And so what I want to know is, is there any part of your plan or your agenda that can maybe speak to some of those issues that are going on within the school systems, within special education, with the young black African American boys specifically? Because I feel like that's a concern.
Expect the unexpected.
Hot seat, hot seat, hot seat.
And, and thank you.
They are good, good questions. And yes, special ed and African American boys concerning.
Yes.
How I will handle that, I don't know.
Okay.
Because I don't do things off the top of my head or off the cuff.
Absolutely.
Um, and special ed population has increased immensely.
Yeah.
And it, it is concerning. And how they are diagnosed, how the students are tested to qualify or not qualify, yes. Done elementary as well as high school. I've done ED, the emotionally disturbed. Um, I have done um, cross categorical, I have done the delayed. So autism, I've worked with those also. Um, how I can't give you specifics, but they are excellent questions. And how is your son now?
Um, he's doing well, but um, he's still, actually what ended up happening was we moved out to Arizona. Once we moved out to Arizona, that school system reevaluated him and said, he is far from emotionally disturbed. I don't know who put this on him, but he's not. And so they, they took him off. But then when we moved back here to Ohio, they, TPS again, feels as though he has a learning disability. What I feel is that he, in the process of, this all started in his, like I said, Head Start. He wasn't even in kindergarten yet. So his first three years of schooling have been TPS bouncing him around from school to school. And um, in those classrooms where there are children who do have, you know, much, who have needs, um, it's, it's, it's hard for them to learn. It's challenging for him, okay? And so it's uh, it's, it's, it's put us back some. And so now we're, you know, by the, you know, I think, shout out to my support system, the Davis family and my mother, we all collectively are just putting in the extra work. And, and this whole homeschooling thing has done a lot because, you know, now I realize it's just gonna have to fall back on me, you know, as his mother, I have to be his advocate. I have to make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to do at home. So that he's, you know, set up for success.
That's the best that-
So he is doing much better. Thank you for asking.
Advocating for your child and being there and having the conversations with the teachers. And we all understand that this is very trying time right now-
Yes, yes.
For both students and the teaching staff. We, we're entering to land that we have never gone in before. And so I think parents are actually seeing the real deal now too.
Yeah, we are, yes we are.
Working with your students on the Chromebooks and, and understanding-
What you dealing with in the classroom.
Exactly. And so it, special ed is different.
Yeah.
But you have to advocate for your child. I have, my grandson is also special ed. I think I was ADHD. They just didn't know that back then.
I am AT, and you know that, that's why I got my butt whooped. Nana didn't play, that belt did something, but that ain't always the solution either.
That ain't, but I, I, I got the whoopings too. It worked for me. I got the whoopings and then I got the punishments. I sat on the porch a lot of summers.
Well, I just want to say um, to you, I would love to outs, you know, off air, of course, outside at, at another time and date, sit down with you and um, be of help, be of assistance. Maybe I can give some ideas, some suggestions of, you know, I mean, not that I'm anybody, but I'm just saying, you know, as a mother who has personally dealt with this, experienced it, um, maybe just some ideas or thoughts that I have on it. Maybe I can be of help.
Yes. And I would like to meet your son too, so that I can get a one-on-one.
Absolutely. And that's what it is. It's a, it's a real podcast, real conversation. And we have so many people that's weighing in and listening. Also, uh, if you would like to get to know or ask a question to our newest city council, please call in, four one nine.
Four one nine, what's on your mind? Give us a call at four one nine five four oh three five six six. We want to hear from you.
So when we talk about those that get a chance to call and those that get a chance to weigh in in the conversation, when you had a chance, as you have had a chance, AT, to serve in the school system and you dealt with youth and family and administrators, how will you translate that to now the seat of power? Cause many of the decisions that you're gonna make are gonna impact our lives. So how has being in the schools prepared you for city council? And as you said, working with the team. Cause there was things that you had to work with administrations and leaders that you was like, uh, we got to, but we got to get this goal accomplished.
Exactly.
The bigger picture is always the students.
Yeah.
Our children. That's the bigger picture.
Yes.
We may have issues personally, but the bigger picture is the children and how they will make out.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I like, um, people are saying very honest answers. That's me.
Yeah.
Um, honest, truthful. Everybody don't like the truth. Uh, the movie. You can't handle the truth.
Yeah, I love that movie. I watch it all the time.
Leah talked about that too.
So I'm there, but um, as I learn and as I develop in this council seat, um, I'm always about the truth.
Yeah.
Um, this seat is temporary.
Yeah.
Because I'm just holding the seat until everything settles. I was appointed. So I'm not delusional about that.
Right.
Um, and people want to ask, well, are you gonna run? Well, I don't know. I need to, I've got to learn my job and do my job for right now.
I need to deal with today.
This is today. And this is my season. And um, I'm doing what I can do in learning it. As far as popping out with, I'm gonna do this and I'm gonna do this and I'm a, nah, cause I'm a team player.
Right.
And teamwork make the dream work.
Absolutely.
I, and that's what I've learned dealing with the school system.
Okay.
I'm also in the union.
Mm-hmm.
So dealing union and management, we have to work together. And we will not always agree.
Yeah.
But we have to learn to disagree and agree in the content that we're not gonna chop nobody's head off.
Right.
Okay? Um, in the decisions that we make, the ultimate goal is always for the best for our students. What will be the best beneficiary are students? Because they're the product of what's to come. I'm not gonna be here always, but I want to leave a legacy that says, I was always about the children.
And you are a parent of three grown ass kids that don't play about they mama. So uh, don't get, and her nephew, so don't get it twisted. But I, I like what you said. When, and even when you tapped Leah, that's why our other city council, uh, again, as they go through this journey, Tyrone Riley, Larry Sykes, Gary Johnson, Keith Mitchell, and of course, uh, our councilwoman, uh, Yvonne Harper. Whatever that journey looks like, we ask for your peace and strength. But I say to that, y- your point, what does it say about Toledo when they give an opportunity to someone like you? What can the influential eyes and ears that's listening, that you represent Toledo from your background? What does that say to you? When you, when you see someone who has a journey like yourself, that what you will share, what people don't know, but that Toledo said that I'll give you an opportunity. What did that say about Toledo?
The possibilities are endless.
Right here in Toledo?
Right here in Toledo. And, and I said that when I was interviewed um, after I was sworn in from my first council meeting, I think it was. Um, Toledo has endless possibilities. We have only tapped into a little of the surface of possibilities for Toledo. Toledo is a great place to live, a great place to raise your children.
Yes.
A great school district. The possibilities are endless. We've got to open the door to opportunities for everybody.
Yes.
The playing fields gotta be level. We all can play this game and we all can win. But we gotta learn to play together.
And it's interesting because you mentioned, uh, Leah, she said off air that some people ain't happy about her leadership. AT, that's cool, because you know what? And the reason why I say that? There are near over seven billion people in the world. If one billion of those do not like Cassandra McPherson, you got another six billion to go.
That's right.
And you can't handle all of them. So if this what hate looks like, okay. But Leah, when she mentioned about the possibilities, that you can have a troubled past, you can have, you can have what you didn't need and still get an opportunity in Toledo.
Yeah, and it's so true. I mean, me personally, I am one of those people who in my younger year, oh, I can't wait to get out of Toledo. Toledo is this, Toledo is that. And I've moved away three times and here I am, you know, at the end of the days, here I am. And, and this is where I went into partnership and built, and, and am building my business. This is where I'm building my brand. This was the first place where I got my, my jobs out of college. I went to college for broadcasting. So it wasn't until I came back to Toledo that I got my first job in news and radio and, you know, one oh seven point three, channel thirteen, channel eleven. I mean, I've done, everything I've done on my resume has been right here in Toledo. And I thought that I had to go to Hollywood and go to Atlanta and go to AZ and all these different places. And I found all my success right here in my home.
You look at the, the, the small businesses, black owned small businesses.
And entrepreneurs.
And entrepreneurs. And when I went out to um, Southland, the pop-ups.
Yes.
Wait till this Saturday.
Wait till this Saturday.
I went out there and I was like, oh wow. And then baby girl, Unique.
Yes, shout out to our girl Unique.
Yes. That was awesome.
Yes.
So, you know, in, in just her business, I ain't, yeah, I am-
No, no, a little biased.
Tell them the name, tell them the name of our girl Unique's business.
Oh, my little baby divas.
Yes, yeah. Shout out to our girl Unique and-
And she my girl, but I remember her as a young girl.
Right.
High school.
Yeah.
And going through. And, and look at her now. Oh, Janice is shouting all around heaven.
I love it.
She has turned this thing around.
Yes.
And she is about her business. And she's giving God the credit for where he has placed her.
That's right.
At this time. I am so proud of her and I always inbox her and say, I'm so proud of you. I am so proud of many of the young people that have ventured out. Keitha Shears and Delance.
Yes.
I am proud to see-
Hot box.
Hot box.
I am so proud to see young people um, taking a risk.
Yes.
And, and making their dreams come true. And you can do it here.
And you can.
Hey, with God, all things are possible.
And so, and so Leah, to, to hear her say that, so she's talking about her bestie's oldest child.
Yeah.
But her bestie's middle child, when you, they like, she, so they come in that era where you name your kids after your best friend because as she said, Janice, AKA the Jews, they were childhood, lifetime, lifelong friends. My aunt named her second child after her first child, middle name Danielle. So Jasmine Danielle is, is, when you have that type of relationship, that it's stronger than friendship.
Yeah.
It's stronger than, what, you, you sometimes get closer to your friends than your family.
Yeah.
And that's how you were. And all of those that come out of that Avondale Pickett, that Junction neighborhood. And so I, we could see why you would go after District Four, no disrespect again to Councilwoman Harper, but now that you have a seat at the city, and as you just mentioned, you get a chance to learn. We want people to weigh in and call in right now.
Man, I'm telling you, the hearts has been going up.
Keep hitting the hearts.
They've been sending the hearts up, the thumbs up, the smiley faces. They've been sending it up for you. I'm loving it. They are tuned in. Uh, Norma Jean says, I love it. I love it in Toledo. I have to visit again before it gets too cold. And then Julian Mack-
Hurry up and visit.
Julian Mack said, hey, that's the first voter in Lucas County. Hey, Councilperson McPherson.
Right then. I like that. Thank you, Julian Mack. Let's give a round of applause because she was the number one in-person voter today in in Toledo. She was number one. So you can mark that in your calendar. That's the first, AT, you was the first in twenty twenty.
I was the first.
In-person, and you got up at what time?
I got up at three forty-five. I was out there at four thirty. Number two voter was uh, Katie Moline, who was running for city council at large. Her husband was number two. Thank you, Katie, for bringing donuts out to us today. Thank you. And uh, number three voter was Michelle Lewis from the neighborhood.
Oh, they getting out there.
Harold Mosley and his daughter.
He brought a first time voter?
His daughter was not a first time voter, but I believe she was first time early vote. And they were out there at eleven PM last night. They slept in their car.
Are you serious?
Yes.
Now that is commitment.
I was so proud of her.
That is commitment. Treats, you wanna sleep in your car?
Cause, thank you, Harold Mosley, former Toledo Police Officer.
I love that.
So- Family thing. That's a family thing. Father and daughter.
Generational.
Yes, yes.
Spending quality time, but also doing something productive and important.
Yes.
And you said the line was wrapped around the building down at the Board of Elections?
Wrapped around the building.
Social distancing people had on their mask.
Social distancing, we had on our masks. We were sitting there in our chairs at four thirty in the morning. And we had our chairs socially distanced. We had our masks on. Um, Earl Mack was there.
He's gonna be our guest tomorrow.
Julian Mack, who just, they were there lined up and we were waiting for our turn to go in. So we were about the first, Pastor Thomas Talmadge and his wife were sitting in their car.
My Zion, Car City.
In the morning. They were in their car at four thirty in the morning.
Y'all went to, y'all took a nap last night and got up and went.
Right.
Set the alarm clock.
So Councilwoman, who are some of the people that's on your live that you just want to say, I love you? And I, who are some of your family friends? Cause we don't want to hold you much longer, but who are some that you just want to say, I love you and thank you?
Love you. Raven Montgomery from Raleigh, North Carolina. Latonya Reed is watching. Shante Hopkins from, she's Toledo, but she's in Cincinnati.
Hey.
Mary Kugler Gaston, hey girl. Pickett.
Okay, okay.
Love it.
Jackie Allen Patton. Kami Cameron. I worked with her at TPS. She's retired now. Lila Pierce, my next door neighbor. Remember Patty Sampson?
I do, I do.
Lila is her sister. And we just lost Jessie Sampson last week.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
What would you like to say to those, AT, that's lay, that's listening? So two things, what, who would you continue with to say thank you and your appreciation? And then secondly, what would you like for us to do to assist you in your seat? I'm talking about your loo, your listeners, your viewer. How can we assist you in this journey? So first, who's your appreciation? Secondly, who and what, how can we help you along in your journey?
Well, somebody's on the live and they said, hi mom. Didn't know this is our life. So I think it's your daughter Danielle?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey Danielle.
Yes. Um, I want to say thank you to my mother. Thank you to my pastor and my Brayton United Methodist Church family, Kathy Moore and Roland Moore, uh, to my Mama Jenkins in Columbus, Ohio, Shay, um, to all of my friends, um, Latonya.
Somebody's on the live. They said your class is watching. I don't know what that means, but you got a whole class watching you. I love it.
We're on, we're on live classroom.
I love it.
Classroom.
She's on Google Classroom.
We have went into Google, Google Classroom.
The four one nine grind. This is, this is social studies, I do believe.
Shout out to that social studies class.
Living, so they're on there watching now. Um, I just want to thank, um,
Students?
Judge Jack Puffinberger.
Yes.
For taking a chance and appointing me to city council.
So when y'all see that name, Puffinberger, green and white sign, just remember, you want to say thanks to who?
Jack Puffinberger.
Yes.
He's on the ballot.
He's on the ballot.
He's on the ballot. Um, I want to say thank you to Representative Paula Hicks Hudson.
Okay.
Yes.
Former mayor and state representative.
Yes. Encouraging, support. Yvonne Harper, thank you.
Love you, Councilwoman.
And um, I could go on and on.
And one thing we say about that-
We always say this.
If we can't get you today.
Everybody, everybody. And what I would ask for the constituents of Lucas County and the city of Toledo is to be patient, not just with me, but with the new, the four of us that are newly uh, elected, um, not elected, appointed.
Yeah.
There is a difference. That's why I gotta figure that out. Appointed to city councils, um, we are in the learning process.
Yeah.
And so immediate change? No.
Right, don't expect it.
Don't even expect it.
This ain't Michael, this ain't the microwave. Instant, we gotta crock pot this thing.
We gotta crock pot it. We gotta do a slow cooking. But if you have concerns or you have issues, please do not hesitate to contact us. And we are for the people. We serve you. So I, that's, that's my, that's my billboard. That's my soapbox.
I love it.
We serve you and I'm learning. I'm excited to learn. I'm gonna do the best that I can because I know God has appointed me for this time.
Absolutely.
Thank you to Reverend Perry Ellis, Bishop Randall Parker, Reverend Carter, all the preachers that are praying, the NAACP, I met with them, we met with them and Reverend Cedric Brock, the IMA, because y'all praying for us and keep praying for us. Pray for the city. Pray for the leadership.
Yes.
Not just local, state, national, pray. And most of all, get your butt up and out to vote.
Yes.
Y'all heard it.
Early vote.
Yes.
Get up, get out and vote. It is so, it is, your life depends upon it right now. Remember to stay social distancing. Remember to wear your mask. And school, our students are getting ready to come back into schools. Please encourage your students, your children to wear their mask, to be careful, social distancing. I know it's gonna be difficult. You know, y'all ain't seen one another in a long time and I'm tapping girlfriend back here.
Murky murk our interns, cop bulldog.
You can't walk into the building and start hugging everybody.
Right, right.
We have to social distance.
Yeah.
Because this pandemic is no joke.
No.
I've had it. My son almost lost his life to it.
Wow, you had it?
Yes.
Wow.
And I know-
Survivor.
Survivor.
Amazing.
And I know a lot of people that have conquered it.
Yes.
But we cannot be cocky and thinking-
Take it as a joke.
Yeah, that it's over.
Right.
It ain't over.
It's showing.
Till it's over.
That's right.
And that's until we have a vaccine. For real, for real, serious talk. So I am just excited and I thank you, Rise and Grind Morning Show.
Hey!
I love it.
For having me this morning and allowing me to have some mic time and-
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate your time.
A new journey, but we journeying this thing together.
Absolutely.
And um, I'm gonna be with Montree's, cause I know he's got some work for me to do around in the community. But uh, we're gonna get it done. And our young people are my number one priority. Second priority would be my seniors.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, cause my mama's one.
Absolutely. And you live, see every senior.
I live with my mama. She tell me, that ain't my house, that's- I live with my mama. She tell me, that ain't my house, that's her house. She reminds me. I live with her. So I'm, I'm good with that. But um, if you have a senior, love on them, take care of them. Uh, Deacon Edwards was out to vote this morning.
Wow.
Deacon Edwards, I know Deacon Edwards gotta be 90 years old.
Wow.
But he was gonna walk and get in line. And I was like, no, Deek, no, Deek, you getting up here.
I know, that's right.
You right here at the door. Sit in my chair. Cause you the Deek.
Wow, that's what they were talking about uh on, I think it was the morning hustle or the breakfast, just paying homage and respect to those seniors in the community, those elders, those pillars in the community. And that's what you still do. That's what those, our interns is listening. We're going to pay homage to those that have paved the way. And we want to continue, and I say this wholeheartedly, A.T. This ain't just a conversation or an interview. You gonna be back here because we gonna be a platform for you to get information out. We're going to be uh your legs, your ears, that you will need to serve and to lead Toledo into the next uh, the next journey. And we're glad that we got somebody that looks like us, that sounds like us, that has drip like us. Uh, and we thank you this morning for taking the time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And yes, I need some extra legs and I need some extra ears and I need some extra eyes to see what's going on and share what you're seeing. Because you know, scripture says that the young folks are ones that's gonna see visions and dream dreams. Old man too, but the young folk.
Yeah.
So I, the world is yours. So, and he's rocking it.
And so hit the hearts, hit the love right now for Toledo newest city council. Give her a round of applause. Councilwoman McPherson, you know, young folks, they gonna give you a name. So A.T., you gonna probably be like my, you gonna hear like you hear in this school, my auntie is on city council.
I'm Miss Mack at school.
Okay, Miss Mack.
My students say, Miss Mack. Hey, shout out to my class, 3123, Scott Bulldog, all of y'all.
And they probably going, cr-.
Yes.
Make some noise for the students. Just give them a little energy. Give them a little energy. Come on, Murky Mark. Come on, JB.
And let's make some noise for all of our listeners and our viewers on live, man. You guys have been showing crazy support, crazy love. I've been seeing the hearts go up this whole show. Shout out to uh DJ Impress on the live. He said, the energy is crazy and he loves this show. Thank you so much for tuning in. Um, and this ain't it. This is the Rising Rye Morning Show, every single Monday through Friday morning, but we got a whole lineup of heat. And when I say we got heat, we got heat. We got Executive Suite with Dr. Vic. We have 419 Grind with Jessie. We have Real Table Talk with your girl, Miss Leah Renee. Of course, we have Self-Explanatory with Lance and Arlinda, Nothing But Net with Sandy Brown, Capital T with Tasha and Tanya, No Facts Given with DJ Breezy, Claw Talk with RC, HBCU Vibes with Trees and underrated sports, all coming soon. Like, listen, we got a whole lineup.
It was
Whole lineup.
It was a lot and much appreciation to RC's last night with Claw Talk, had great energy, No Facts Given, shows aired last night. This is a whole network of podcasting that nobody else is doing in the country. That's why we are the number one urban podcast show in the country. Again, thank you so much. Make sure you vote, toledocitypaper.com, best local podcasts. Make sure you best vote, best anchor duo with Leah Renee and your boy Big Trees. Also, thank you to our sponsors. If you would like to be a sponsor of the all new Rising Grind Morning Show or the 419 Grind, please send your info, information to info@the419grind.com. Also, thank you Lima Humadop and Hot Box, presented to you by the all new Rising Grind Morning Show. And Leah?
Yes.
We got Earl Mack tomorrow, the Cheryl, Cheryl talk right here. But before we go Leah, as you always do.
And until next time.